We'll call the order, the Board of, Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. All right. I will pass the meeting to Mr. Clerk, Dan Ish.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Good morning, Commissioners. We will do the Open Meetings Act as to my left here on the north wall. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call for the meeting. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers. All right, all present. The first item is election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the ensuing year. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Roger Garcia as our Chairman for 2025.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Give me one moment, please. All right, with that, I will close the nominations. And there is a motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend to nominate Roger, Commissioner Garcia as the Chair for the Board for the ensuing year. Please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item is the election of the Vice Chair. Is there any nominations?
Go ahead. Mike Friend be my nominee for Vice Chairman.
And the other nominations for Vice Chair. If not, we'll vote on the nominee, Mike Friend, for Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, that completes the election portion. We're going to jump into Board of Equalization, and then we'll get to that recognition. So kicking off Board of Equalization, roll call, please. Oh, Reese's Board of Commissioners, my bad. I'll take a motion to Reese's Board of Commissioners. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll vote on that.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now we'll jump into Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, his present and Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Items A and B, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. And B, A Call for Meeting and Set Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, as Date for Hearing Certified and Assessment Corrections Reflecting the Addition of Admitted Property to the Tax Rules or Increased Value on Property. Do I have a motion, a second for both A and B? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our Resolutions. On the Board of Equalization, Resolutions C through E, which the Board can take and block if desired. Motion to approve in adjournment by Rogers, second by Morgan. Thank you. Was there anybody here to comment on any of the equalization resolutions? If not, we'll vote.
Commissioners Kavanaugh and Rogers. Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, that completes Board of Equalization. We'll now jump into Board of Commissioners again. Roll call. Motion to go back into Board of Commissioners. Motion by Boyle, second by Friend. Now, roll call.
Motion passes seven to zero. I'll do the roll call as well. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Yes. All right, we'll jump into first item of business is Section 1A, B, and C, Minutes and Claims. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. B, the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. And C, approval of resolution authorizing the clerk, controller to make certain payments if a county board meeting is canceled during calendar year 2025. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, for Items A through C. Any comments? Otherwise, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We're going to bump up recognitions and proclamations per request of one of our recognitions from the Douglas County Youth Center. So we'll go ahead and go to Section 3, Item C, Recognition of the Falling County Employee Who Is Retiring, Shirley Nelson, who has worked for the Douglas County Youth Center for 20 years. And we'll have Rondi and Mark say some words.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here to recognize Shirley Nelson's first 20 years of service for the county. She spent her first 10 years working for the county at the Juvenile Assessment Center. We were lucky enough to be able to steal her from there 10 years ago and have her come spend some time with us here at the Douglas County Youth Center. As you can tell by the large group of folks here to send her off, that she's definitely a, someone who we love, and she's a great person, and better than that, an excellent friend. She is truly going to be missed. It's going to be hard to look in our office and not see her there because, you know, during the course of her time working with us, you know, we developed such a strong friendship. You know, you can see she has a lot of friends here, a lot of family here. This is a, you know, it's an exciting moment that she gets to retire, but she is truly going to be missed. I just wanted to let everybody, for Shirley, know, you know, I know. I love you. I'm going to miss you. Of course, I'll be calling you all the time, but, okay, I don't want to be long-winded. I know everyone would like to say something, but I just want to let you know that I truly love you, truly going to miss you. And go ahead, Mark.
Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center. I work daily with Shirley. We have a lot of outreaches that go a lot of different directions. And she's really good at pulling me back in. Once I get too far away from where we're at, and she's, she's just a marvelous, wonderful, caring, devoted county employee who's always wanted to do her best and was really landed in the right spot for us at the youth center. What she brings, what she brought to us was a level of professionalism and caring and, and her ability to reach out to others, to solve issues was just impeccable. And you know, I love you, we love you, and we're wishing the best for you every day. And I asked some of the supervisors, just give me one word for Shirley. And the words were compassionate, magnanimous, dedicated, tenacious. That wasn't my words, just want you to know. Courageous. You're a role model, a leader, and a friend. And you've made my life much better. And I'd like to thank you. And I'd just like to thank the departments that came to recognize her and to stay so long. And we really just appreciate everyone being here in this wonderful spirit. Thank you.
I know we have some comments from Board and from Zoom, so let me go to Commissioner Kavanaugh, then I'll get the Zoom hand.
Thank you. I usually don't make a comment on this portion of the agenda, but I wanted to recognize you, Shirley, for your many years of dedicated public service. In one of our most important agencies, Douglas County Youth Center deals with troubled youth. And you've done a magnificent job over the years for the people of Douglas County, and particularly for those kids in our care. And that does not go unnoticed. I would just point out the number of people who have come here to recognize your service. And congratulations on that. And I hope you enjoy a long and happy retirement. You've earned it. Thank you. Thanks for all your years.
Commissioner Boyle.
So congratulations. I just want to make a quick comment, too. It's rare that we have supervisors come in with tears in their eyes and saying things like they love their employee. So you obviously have had an impact, and that can't, shouldn't be unrecognized. So I wish I could have seen exactly the work you did, but it's obvious it was exemplary. So enjoy your well-deserved retirement.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your work with us. All of the descriptions that your supervisors, that Mark rattled off, are all right on point. And again, your dedication and compassion to the youth of our county has been exemplary, and I thank you for that. And I do, too, hope that you enjoy your retirement.
We do have one hand on Zoom. I'm not sure who it is. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Friend. I'll, give me one second. Is there a hand on Zoom?
Sherry.
Oh, Sherry.
Um, yeah, good morning. I just wanted to thank Shirley for all of her work. It's been just wonderful working with her, and I will miss her dearly. So I just wanted to get my well wishes to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. And Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little bit worried. I found over the years that nobody's irreplaceable, and everybody's replaceable, but I'm kind of wondering whether you are. Thank you for everything. I clearly, I am. I'm worried. I don't know why. Thank you for your service so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We do have a resolution to honor your 20 years of service at Douglas County and to our youth and all of our citizens in Douglas County. And so I'll take a motion, a second. Motion by Kavanaugh, second by Borgeson. And so we'll vote on that, and then we'll make sure to take a picture with you, if that's okay. All right, so motion on table. We'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And while we don't have a ton of space up here, if any family or anybody else wants to really hop in the picture, we can try to squeeze you in. All right, thank you so much for that. We're going to go back to where we were on the agenda, which was the consent agenda. Section 2, Items A through N, on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. And we'll take commentary, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just a couple of questions for the record, so that the viewing public has some idea. Items E and L are collective bargaining agreements with a couple of our unions. E is with the Union of Operating Engineers, Local 571, and L is with the Employees United Labor Association. And just so the public can get some idea of what we're doing in terms of compensation under these agreements, Marcos is our labor negotiator. If you could give us the percent increase on these, Marcos, and the economic impact, that'd be great.
Sure, Commissioner, excuse me, Marcos C. Martin, Douglas County Administration. Okay, so two items on your agenda, E and L. E is just a scrivener's error that's being corrected at the request of the union of an existing contract. That's for the 901 employees, the 901 operators and dispatchers over at our 901 facility. So that has no impact on compensation or anything else. It's just a scrivener's error in an existing contract that we're changing, that we're correcting. The other item, L, I have them in the right order, right? Yeah. The other item, L, is at, it's a four-year contract for ULA corrections. And ULA corrections are our employees over at the Records Department in, at the corrections facility. So there's a, I'd say ballpark about 30 employees over there. The, it is a four-year contract, 2024 through 2027. It is a six and a quarter increase for 2024, and then 3% for the following three years of an increase. And, yeah, I think, Commissioner, if you had, did you have more specific questions than that?
Do you have the economic impact of that?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so I believe the first year ballpark of, because again, this is a very small group for the county, about $70,000 of an impact. And then I believe maybe following each year, so progressive, another $40,000 or so of an increase year after year after year for those following three years. But, you know, again, staffing levels can vary, and that is all, you know, there's other variables, but that's my best ballpark for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump to Section 3, Recognizations Proclamations. And under Items A and B, we did have two other retirement recognitions, one being for Elizabeth Hansen, who has worked for Douglas County Department of Public Property for 15 years, and one for Olin Redden, who has worked for Douglas County Engineer for 24 years. I don't believe either is here today, but we will honor their service to Douglas County and the citizens, and entertain a motion to approve both recognitions. Motion by Borgeson, second by Rogers. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We have one final recognition, a very special one today. I don't know if retirement is the right word, but today is Commissioner Maureen Boyle's final meeting as she completes her term on the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. So on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we did have a hot-off-the-print recognition for you here that we will be presenting to you. It states, "In recognition of your dedicated service as a Douglas County Commissioner, we, who honorably served the citizens of District 5 from January 2021 to January 2025." And so I will take some comments from anybody who would like to comment. I do have some quick words that I'll chime in real quick. So before my, my hotly contested race in 2020 against the late and great Commissioner Mike Boyle, Maureen's father, I don't think Maureen and I knew each other too much, but Maureen was always so kind and courteous towards me, and especially as things developed, and I had the opportunity to fill very big shoes in District 1. You know, Maureen always welcomed me, said she looked forward to, to working with me, even though I did have a hotly contested race against her father with a difference of three votes, right? But it's been a pleasure working with you. And the way I describe Maureen to other people is that she's very much a, show me the facts, and based on those facts in front of me, I'm going to try to make the best decision I can, which is always a respectable approach. And I appreciate that of you. Sometimes that made you the swing vote, but that is okay because, you know, we knew that you were really doing your research and trying to make the best decision possible. So that's my quick two cents. I know Commissioner Morgan wanted to say a few words.
Well, when you get older, you tear up so easily. But it's really been a pleasure getting to know you, to meet you on Underwood for coffee. And I want to continue to do that. I know you have a busy schedule, and we will do that. And I just want to thank you, and I know that both your parents and Mike are looking down and thinking, what a great job you did. And I tried to, I don't know that I should say it, Brian won't be happy about this, but I was hoping you would continue and tried to convince you of that. But I know how busy you are and how many people you take care of in your service as a physician. And just want to really thank you for the time you've given this board and your expertise in so many areas for us. You're a special person, and you will be missed and thought of often. Take care, Maureen.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I shared a little bit with Maureen last meeting there, but, so we've had our words, but I just want to thank her. As I, what I will say is, I told her, I'll have a little bit of withdrawal. This is the first time in my years on the board that I have not served with a boil. And it'll be interesting in that respect. So I do look forward to staying in touch, but I appreciate the time with her and wish her well.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'm, I'm the opposite of Roger Garcia. I've known you since you were born, and your parents before that. We both share, I think, kind of a historical distinction of having served on the board, and our father served on the board. It's been a pleasure working with you and a delightful continuation of the tradition of public service in the Boyle family. Congratulations, Doctor. And I know you're not retiring, so I can't wish you a happy retirement. A productive career is before you, I'm sure.
Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The best, well, one of the, for me, I'll, I'll share with Maureen other, other things later, my thoughts and everything. But policymaking and politics can get somewhat intense. And when I feel like I'm getting intense, she's there, and then I don't feel as intense. I don't know why, but I appreciate that. Now I don't know what I'm going to do. I'll have to, Marianne, when I get intense, she'll make, Marianne will make me even more intense. I don't know, but thank you, Maureen. I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
Don't worry, I'll, I'll help you out. Maureen, thank you. And, you know, as Mike kind of started to talk about the political part of it, one of the things that I admire about you is that you left the party politics at the door. And you did your homework, and you looked at the issue, and you voted accordingly. And I, that's what I appreciate about you. And you come from good stock. I loved your mom, mama and your daddy, and they're looking down proud as heck as of you. And you'll carry on and do great things, and I can't wait to hear about some of the adventures that you do abroad. So keep us posted. But thank you for your service to the board and to Douglas County.
Commissioner.
So I wrote things out because four hours ago, I was at the hospital seeing patients. A little tired. So that explains kind of why this, this was a hard decision not to run again. But when I feel the fatigue of moments like this, after being, you know, up at night, it's like, okay, all right, I'm making the right decision. I'm getting too old for that stuff. So but, so I wrote it down. But first, I want to thank everyone for the fascinating ride we've been on for the past four years. Started off with me running for office and enjoying the absolute gift of Started off with me running for office and enjoying the absolute gift of serving with my dad. I got to watch him in action, doing what he loved and something that he was just naturally good at. I appreciate the support you all gave me and my family as we went through his cancer diagnosis publicly and his death shortly thereafter. My brothers and sister and I truly appreciate the support. And then I want to say a few things to each of my commissioners who taught me valuable life lessons during my time on the board. So first Jim, I admire your stubborn Irishness and thank you for inviting me to Irish events. Yep, Guru Amagat. That's Irish for thanks a million. Mike, your self deprecating humor reminds me, politics can be fun. Healthy debate is productive if it stays healthy. And I want to thank you for engaging me. And then Mary Ann, my mom had a saying that I live by, stand up for what's right, even if it means standing alone. And I've seen you do this time and time again. And it's a very critical and important quality to have. So I want to, I admire your passion. It's you're always thinking of the people and I want to be more like that. And then Chris, I admire your determination and your work to never settle for status quo when things can not be just better, but best. You're always playing like you have the ball, you're one point down with ten seconds to go. And I like your drive to be the best, to do the best for everyone around you. And then PJ, PJ, after my dad died, I saw you as the heart of the board. You tell me stories of how wonderful my parents are and of the good times you've had with my dad. Some stories sound a little different than Dad's, probably because Dad never let the truth get in the way of a good story. So thank you for giving me space to remember and enjoy my parents and my dad. And then Roger, I first knew you as my dad's opponent. I've come to know you as a man with similar values as my dad. You love your wife, you respect your daughters, you tell them you believe in them, you raise them to be strong and confident. And I couldn't have asked for a better man to quote, replace him on the board. And to the staff, thank you for literally and figuratively having my back. I am so impressed with the team that keeps the wheels of the county turning. You're absolutely the unsung heroes. And then finally, to the citizens of Douglas County, despite how it seems, the members of this board truly believe in doing what's best and what's right for us. It's a tight rope walk with competing priorities like providing public safety or mental health services versus managing property taxes. Making these choices is never easy, but commissioners always have the citizens in mind. And then a final thought, I am a fifth generation politician in my mom's family. Some of you will be happy to hear this, others might be sad, but this is the first time in twenty eight years you won't have a Boyle in political office representing you. So thank you for electing me. It's been absolute honor of a lifetime.
Jake, I might ask Jake to take a picture of the seven of us here. All right. Thank you again, Commissioner Boyle, for your service. And in one of your last acts, you have invited the next agenda item to join us. So we're going to go to.
Being older, tearing up. But when I was in high school, my parents had something for Sam Howell. And I just said to Maureen, I think her grandmother was Dorothy, Sam's wife. And she said, yeah, her grandma was Dorothy. So I really go back with your family and my family, my mom and dad having that. And I kind of remember that. And my wife, Annie, of over forty years, worked in the treasures office. And with your grandfather, it's just a small world. So best to you again. I just love the Boils.
Very good. Thank you so much. We're going to jump to presentation, section four. Item A is a presentation by Inclusive Communities as requested by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. So if you want to introduce?
Yes. So today I'd like to invite Kami Watkins, who's the executive director, CEO of Inclusive Communities, to come and speak. It's a unique organization that I think could use, to get a light shined upon them basically, and really explain what they do. They provide all kinds of services to the community that are available, including things ranging from camps for kids to workforce education and development, workforce retention. And I think in the nowadays with some, I know workforce retention can be a big deal. It's more expensive, of course, to hire new employees than to retain the ones you have. So I asked Kami to come and speak about some of the services they offer, to publicize what they do, because I think that those services can be quite valuable and help organizations who are struggling to find, find workers. But really just to concentrate a lot on retaining them as well. So with that, Kami Watkins.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Boyle. And again, congratulations and thank you for your service to our community. So as Commissioner Boyle said, I'm Kami Watkins. I serve as the executive director of Inclusive Communities. And just a little bit for those of you who may not be aware, Inclusive Communities has actually been in the greater Omaha metro area since nineteen thirty eight. So we're going into our eighty seventh year here and expecting, planning for our ninetieth anniversary in two thousand twenty eight. We were founded by Otto Swanson, Morris Jacobs of Bozell and Jacobs, and Ralph Swaboda, among other prominent leaders at the time. And we were centered around addressing that there was going to be a secret boycott of Jewish owned businesses. That was happening here in Omaha and Otto, our primary founder was approached to join that because they said he was a Christian. And so he would benefit from having these businesses close and go away if this boycott was successful. And he was absolutely disgusted. He actually threw the gentleman out of his office and started the Midlands Chapter of the National Conference of Christians and Jews. And that is our originating organization. So we started first as an interfaith organization whose focus was really on confronting prejudice and bigotry around faith and race. And we broadened in the two thousands to really expand our work. And we shifted to really working for creating and promoting democratic values of every person having dignity and respect regardless of their differences and their identities to ensure that we have a society of the Brotherhood of Man. And that's when our, one of our longest running fundraising program, which is the Humanitarian Awards, started originally as the Brotherhood Awards. And we honor different folks around the community that were promoting those values. And so that's our history. That's where we started. And it's really the values of our founders which has continued the work that we do today. So we continue to be a human relations organization. And as Commissioner Boyle stated, we have a youth camp. So there are three ways in which we really enact our mission and our work, and the first of which being our leadership development. So our youth camp, which is called Inclusity, it's for high school aged youth. It's this, we're actually celebrating our twenty fifth anniversary of that program. So we've been doing it for twenty five years. And some of the byproducts of that were, because this is human relations work and our focus is really on how do we create behaviors that create and give skills for critical thinking, communication around crucial dialogues, but also leadership skills to address and confront bullying in schools, but then also create the workforce that is ready to handle the complex problems that we have in front of us while being able to manage that with people with difference. And some of the folks that have graduated from this program, I'm proud to say, are within businesses here in Nebraska through chambers. Some of them hold elected offices across the state and in other states. And they also are chief diversity officers and inclusion and human resources officers for chambers here as well as universities in the state. And so in that twenty five years, the folks that we have produced that have stayed here and kept their value in their work here have been really beneficial to the progress and the economic development of our community. But one of the things that we realized is that for twenty five years, we were growing these youth to get them ready for the world. But then we realized that there wasn't the same kind of support and leadership development offered in the business world to be ready for these youth. And so we started seeing some of that talent leave. And so that's when we invested in our leadership development programs for adults and for businesses. So we offer our action services, which is our kind of consulting wing. And that's where we call through our institutional transformation work. And so we support businesses, government agencies, healthcare and public health agencies. We actually are, have partnered with the Douglas County Health Department a few times with support. And we actually have two of their staff, one currently going through our adult leadership program called Lead Diversity and one that has graduated from it. Through that program, we are really helping promote skill development around how to do collective impact. Because we recognize through community and working together and breaking down the silos amongst different agencies is the best way that we can create a more holistic center for retention and recruitment of workforce here. And it's also really starting to see greater benefits towards economic development within our communities and creating place making for thriving communities for workers. And one of the key things that was really important for me when I took over in twenty twenty one as executive director of this organization was that we modeled what we preached. And so a lot of the practices that we share with businesses and corporations and government agencies are practices that we have implemented within our own organization. So we have sought to create a culture of a thriving workplace that then we can share through real life examples of how it can be implemented in real life and then scaled up. My favorite thing to do is work with entities that have a complex problem that they're trying to solve. Because what we do is help them think of things differently and create this mindset shift around how do we look at these complex issues through vision and understanding clarity and agility to be more agile to the coming problems. Lastly, our community building work is through our Omaha Table Talk program, which you may have heard of, started by Catholic charities. And in twenty thirteen, they passed that along to us to continue. And so we're really proud of that program now because we've really started to partner with Alternatives to Violence Prevention, which works with the gentlemen that are in the OCCC as, and we have them as our volunteers. So what we've found is we know that when it comes to reentry for folks that are incarcerated, having that connection to community and having a place where they can get that sense of belonging reduces recidivism. And so we decided to partner with this organization. We have gone into OCCC and done training to be facilitators for our table talks. And these gentlemen are able to come every month to our conversations and guide a conversation around like immigration or LGBTQ issues and just be one with others. They don't have to disclose what their history is. People don't judge them based off of their criminal background. But instead they just get to have a dialogue about community engagement. And some of them have said that for the first time they felt human again. And it's filled things within them that they didn't know were missing because of being part of these conversations. And so we're really proud of that and are looking for other ways in which we can partner with community organizations, ranging from folks that are with homelessness or, and also individuals with neurodivergence and other mental health issues. Mental health is another big piece of our work. We are one of the few leadership development programs for both adults and youth that we have mental health practitioners that are part of our curriculum committee and part of our programming. So we infuse it into every aspect, especially for our youth. We have found that that was absolutely necessary for us to be able to ensure that they are getting the skills that they need to be in the workforce tomorrow. I will say there's a lot of misinformation about the work that we do around the fact that we work through the lens of diversity, equity and inclusion. Diversity, equity, inclusion work is not a destination. It's actually the lens by which that kind of shapes how we do our work and how we see community building, leadership development and mindset shifts and institutional transformation. So we're really about promoting courageous leadership and trying to elevate lived experience as well as expertise to tackle these really complex conversations. And so we often have those difficult dialogues. This January, our table talk is on an honest conversation about the sex offender registry. We have, when community members come to us about, let's just have this conversation. We don't take sides, but what we do is we create a space where we can face a problem and have a civil discourse around that and then see what we can do to go forward to create change within our community. So we're proud of being able to do that. And we've been doing that through our, majority of our programs since we've been together. Because we are connectors and bridge builders. And we want to offer our support to any of the, to the commission, but also to our county leadership as necessary to help you tackle problems and look at things in a different way and resources that we can provide to just support, really put forth the goals and the outcomes that you're seeking for this year.
Thank you so much. And I will mention very briefly, thank you for your presentation. I did participate in a table talk many, many moons ago, I think. It was before Inclusive Communities had taken it over. And the setup was just like seven, eight random strangers who all live in Omaha, just came together, have dinner and just get to know each other. And it was a beautiful experience. I don't know if it's still similarly structured, but it was a very worthwhile time to just get to know strangers and hear their stories who all live in the same community. So that was a very cool thing. But big picture, thank you for all you're doing now in the Omaha community. And we'll take any comments or questions there might be. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you. And thank you for being here. The work that you do is really, really important. And maybe afterwards, sometime we can meet. I'd love to see potential partnerships within our youth center and within our adult corrections specifically for the female population. That could be for the youth center as well. I had sat with a group of youth at the end of the year for an event. And they started to express about how they were sad that because of all the negativity around youth today in the media and on social media, they feel like there's this black cloud hanging over their heads. And some of them had been in the system. And they admit and regret what they did, but they've turned their lives around and they don't feel like they're getting the chance, I guess, if you will, to prove to anybody. Because again, it's always negative, 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 negative. And so maybe we could have a conversation about how to change. That's kind of what my challenge is this year is to, for every negative thing that comes out there about our youth, I'm going to try to find a positive one because there's a lot going on. And maybe you could help out with that effort.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And the table talks, they were amazing and I'm sure they still are. But maybe those are a couple also items that table talk could take up.
Yeah, we would absolutely love that. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Just to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Borgerson said, she pulled out a couple of specific examples where your organization could provide some help to Douglas County. Can, can you give some other examples of, say, not just for like governmental entity, but private organizations? Or like you mentioned, OPPD, where, what Inclusive Communities can do? Or what types of problems that come up where, where they would call upon you to, to help?
Yeah. So we've had several of our clients, especially in the, I started in twenty seventeen and really built up our professional development and business development programming. And so we would have a lot of clients reach out to us when they were having workplace disagreement. And which was creating, we know that in a workplace that kind of has that toxic culture that comes from, it usually starts as maybe a communication breakdown. And then those tend to escalate into, okay, now I'm unhappy. And then now it's becoming emotional and feels like more of it's a personal attack within the workplace. So we've come in and started to just create common language for folks. And so we talk about, and we are very micro, we go micro to macro. This idea that you have to try to address the full problem in the beginning is not conducive to actually solving resources. So we have conversations around like what's basic communication? How do we address when we have conflict? And starting with kind of calling in versus calling out, like when's the time to maybe call out that person in a meeting? Or maybe it's more about that one on one conversation. The biggest question we get asked is, can you give us the? The biggest question we get asked is, can you give us those tools on how? So we have activities and we have conversations, a module on crucial conversations where we give them the chance to do some role playing around how to have those difficult dialogues. One activity that I actually really love, it's a three-person where we break them into small groups, and you have two people, they are given a script. One person has like the manager's side, the other person has the employee's side, and then the third person has both sides of the story. So they're given a backstory, but they don't see the others, and we tell them to role play a conversation between the manager and the employee on how you manage this workplace conflict. And then the person observing who sees the full story, because we always know that there's two sides to a story, then gives feedback to them about how they manage that. This comes after we've already given them some skills around how to kind of be more human centered in the way that you approach employee conflict. And then it gives them some insights into, oh, like this person was showing up late because they ended up homeless because of this. And so as opposed to approaching with, why don't you care about your work life? Let me start with what's going on.
Yeah, so it sounds like a lot of it is teaching better communication methods and almost a sort of mediation to a degree.
And well, de-escalation tools as well.
De-escalation, that's a better word. Yeah, yeah. So does that particular entity or what that what you do there, does that tie into the leadership academy too?
So yeah, so with our leadership, our Lead Diversity Program, that's a nine-month program for adults, and it's for folks actually all across the state. We have folks from Grand Island, Norfolk, Columbus, that all have participated, and also Trainor, Iowa, and other cities within Iowa that have participated. We start with, we use our matrix called Affirm, Confront, Transform. And so we start with that really micro, and they identify like from your faith. We have a day all about faith and what that looks like, the intersections of that, gender and ability, so folks with different disabilities, and then several other, I'm like blanking on all of it. But the first few sessions are really focused on diving deep into various aspects of identity to just get a better sense of a learning through lived experience and academic experience of people's experiences that hold those specific identities. Then we get into that confront, which is more about how does this apply to our community? So we have a day where we do a tour of Eastern Omaha, starting usually with the redlining exhibit at UNO. And then we look at what are the ways in which the city has shifted and changed from that experience, and then how does this impact the way in which we interact and our businesses work today? And then we move into transform, which is moving them into that kind of sense and giving the skills around collective accountability. How do we start to work together? And we've started just this last two years ago, Our Better and Stronger Together, where we invite leadership programs from around the area. So Leadership Nebraska, Nonprofit Executive Institute, Leadership Omaha, Lead Diversity all come together, and they have a half-day brainstorming where we look at like the eight big problems they identify that are addressing, impacting our community, and how they can collectively be think differently about how we can solve those. So like workforce retention, transportation, technology, investment are some of the things that come up, and then they split into the work groups that they're interested in, and we set that as this is the start, that's the last session of our cohort, because we want that to be the start of what their journey is. And we encourage them that from this program, your job is to go out and now create those changes in the community that you've identified need to be made.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the presentation today?
I just have one more comment.
Oh, go ahead.
I brought Kami Watkins here with Inclusive Communities really just to bring light to what what they do. I think that they are a resource that needs to be celebrated and and really just brought to attention just because of what what they can do to help with economic development and what they do to help individuals achieve what they're capable of. So so I brought her here because of because of that, and I appreciate you coming, and I feel like I learned a lot. I know we've spoken before, but I've learned a lot more today, too. So thanks for coming to fill us in on Inclusive Communities.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll jump back to presentations, item B, which could have some action associated to it today. I will give some quick context on the Tri-County Resolution, which I guess could also be referred to as the urban counties of Sarpy, Lancaster, and Douglas. As one may recall from last year, there was some synergy in kind of putting together some of our priorities and principles as the three urban counties in Nebraska. And so there was a joint resolution last year. This is an effort to do something similar as the legislative session kicks off here, I think tomorrow. We want to be proactive in some of our own stances and principles for this legislative session. So one effort of many, I'm sure, to come for this long 90-day session. So this was initially drafted by Lancaster and run through some of our stakeholders and individuals here at Douglas County to make sure our lobbyist team thought it was good language, ran it by our NACO representative, Commissioner Borgeson, make sure it was aligned with NACO's priorities for Nebraska in the legislative session, and a few other individuals as well, just to make sure that the text itself represented Douglas County in a good way. So now it's being presented for the board's consideration for approval, but I'll go ahead and read it into the record and also for context for everybody to know what's in the resolution. It's a little bit long, but I'm going to try to read it quickly here. So it says, "Whereas the counties of Douglas, Lancaster, and Sarpy County collectively represent the interests of over 1.1 million Nebraskans, constituting over 56% of the population of the state of Nebraska," excuse me, "whereas the counties deliver essential local government services mandated by the state of Nebraska without state appropriations to support those services, including critical public health, mental health, and public safety services. Whereas despite dramatically rising inflation, a historically competitive labor market, and exceptional population growth, the county's boards of commissioners have prudently managed their property tax levies while continuing to deliver the essential local government services that are that our growing communities want and deserve. Whereas tax reform cannot be achieved at the expense of our county's ability to deliver essential local government services that keep Nebraskans healthy and safe, and whereas the counties, in addition to their individual interests and priorities in the Nebraska legislative, excuse me, Legislature's 2025 Regular Session, have come together on behalf of their collective residents to adopt common legislative priorities. Now therefore be it resolved by the board by the boards of county commissioners of Douglas County alongside our colleagues at Lancaster and Sarpy County that the county boards hereby support the legislature and the governor's efforts to promote the state's health, security, and prosperity by addressing the following pressing issues that are of critical importance to the county's constituents. Number one, the inheritance tax, the county, the counties currently utilize inheritance tax as a means for property tax relief since the revenue from the inheritance tax is utilized for county services that would otherwise be paid by our general fund, which is funded by property taxes. Elimination or reduction of inheritance tax revenues must be balanced by equal and sustainable replacement revenue streams to ensure that the counties can responsibly manage property tax levies while continuing to deliver the critical health and safety services that make Nebraska a preeminent location for families and businesses. Regarding the recent Mullins Court decision, the Mullins decision unexpectedly has upended the county's core public safety mission by increasing the daily population at our county jails. Legislation that enshrines the previously well-established practice of calculating good time credit for consecutive county sentences would ensure that the continued vitality of the county's substantial investments in our existing jail facilities. And number three, state tax shifts to the counties. The county's property taxpayers collectively bear the burden of approximately $80 million in unfunded state mandates here in Douglas County that represent constantly escalating costs of state bureaucracy that the state has shifted to the counties, paying for the salaries and benefits of state personnel and the cost of state office space, utilities, office equipment, and computers. These veiled state property tax levies serve only to conceal the true costs of state government and represent the hidden, excuse me, represent the hidden barrier to real and lasting relief to the county's property taxpayers. And be affirmed resolved that the county's boards hereby authorize the county's advocacy teams to pursue the success of legislation consistent with the principles herein throughout the Nebraska Legislature's 2025 Regular Session dated this date, the 7th day of January 2025. Do we have a motion, a second for discussion? Motion by Rogers. Second by Boyle. Yep, one second, Larry. And so we'll take comments and questions. Again, as mentioned, Sarpy and Lancaster are pursuing equivalent resolutions either this week or next week, and of course, this will be just one of many efforts regarding the legislature this year. So with that, Larry?
Good morning. Happy New Year. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. With the new year and a new government coming up, we the people want to start taking back our sovereignty in the halls of justice, the legislative chambers here as well as in the state. One of the first items that we are against is this association of counties nationally and countywide. However, I want to propose today that you make it a four-county association of counties, and that we are requesting for we the people, a presentation on this topic in regards to our sovereignty to have you work for us, not for a national association. We want to talk about the elections. I sent an email today, early morning, I'm going to give you a copy of it right now to make sure that it gets in the record. I won't read it here today, but I do expect it to be to be come up on a presentation item, possibly all four counties, including adding to this Dodge County, because all of us have been talking about this. It's about the election. It's about what is down at the state. Listed this morning as temporarily suspended, for example, are laws that you probably support that restrict citizens' ability to participate freely in the elections. Used to be in America, this was okay, and we could have fun talking about that. I mentioned something about that in my email. I won't go into that now. But on public property, I was asked to remove my hat. In South Dakota, that was outlawed by the Sheriff's Department as an infringement of First Amendment rights. In fact, one lady was told to turn her jacket or blouse inside out, and she said, no, sir. Guess what? She voted in her bra. She wasn't arrested, but LB 1390 and some of these other bills, I believe, have been buried into some of the ones that were passed, makes criminals of me for contesting the election in any way, shape, or form. So right there is some evidence, not just me, but primarily a stakeholder, as you call them. The real stakeholders are us, and Robert J. Borer does have standing as a former candidate in two different offices in the state of Nebraska and was denied evidence of how many votes he actually got. That's against the Constitution, both federal and state. So I'm hoping you will have the guts in the new year to at least one of you, well, it probably takes four, to agree to have a conversation with the people that hired you about the elections, about the state. If you don't like the state mandates, then don't run down there and ask them for money. You're overspending, and you have to ask them for money. And then you turn around and complain that state unfunded mandates. You can't have it both ways.
10 seconds.
So please open it up to the citizens and restore citizen comments on your agenda. Read the Open Meetings Act, the intent of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the resolution? All right, there's a motion and a second, so we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and jump into our committees. Under Finance, we have Budget Report and Monthly Fee Report as presented. Under Human Resources, we have the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service also as presented. We do have a need for executive session today for, I believe, litigation, is that correct? For litigation. So I'll take a motion and a second to go in executive session. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll vote on that.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The board should now go into executive session for the purpose of litigation, and we want to thank Commissioner Maureen Boyle for her service to Douglas County. Thank you.
Recording stopped. Recording stopped.